Hi Gail, it's Katie.
Hi Katie.
Test audio with you. How are you?
I'm well. Can you hear me?
I can. Yep, nice and clear.
Great.
Julia, can you hear us?
Hi Katie, we can hear you just fine.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Check and thank you.
I'll give you guys a little view of what I can see while I'm.
Oh wow.
Vancouver.
So Gail, we are, it is being recorded right now, so I'll let you know. But that looks gorgeous. I hope you're having a nice time.
I am.
Information on how to join the meeting via Zoom is available on our website, cdfcapitola.org on the meeting agenda. The public can also livestream the meeting on the city's website or on YouTube. As always, this meeting is cablecast live on Spectrum Communications Cable TV, Channel 8 and AT&amp;T Universe, Channel 99, and is being recorded to be re-podcast on the following Mondays and Fridays at 1:00 PM on Spectrum, Channel 71 and Spectrum, Channel 25. A recording of the meeting will also be available on the city's website after the meeting. Our technician tonight is T, and as a reminder, please turn off your cell phones during the meeting. For side of his roll call and pledge allegiance.
We do the roll call first.
Yes, thank you.
No problem. Commissioner SD, Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Wilk.
Here.
Commissioner Westman and Chair Christensen.
And then pledge allegiance. Item two is additions and deletions to the agenda.
We have done.
Item three additions, excuse me. We have additional.
Staff did receive additional materials for tonight's meeting. We had two emails related to item 7A as well as an updated attachment for that item. And item 7C had one email correspondence. All additional materials have been made a part of the record for public viewing and are available online or in the back of the room.
Thank you very much. Item four is oral communications. Members of the public may speak for up to three minutes unless otherwise specified by the chair. Individuals may not speak for more than once during oral communications. All speakers must address the entire legislative body and will not be permitted to engage in dialogue. Is there any?
Good evening, City Council. My name is Mark Cabbage. I'm from Security Garden, Los Angeles. The mayor's door is my black poly George. We didn't have problems because we, like everybody, was 21 years younger inside of us. Because as you know, you cannot talk in the state of California with younger than 21 years. There was something out going all at the time that pointed that out to some police force here in Capitola. The CP, I don't know if you think the traffic in the cocaine, I have business sharing in Capitola. I mean, I mentioned that to the captain. The city of Capitola was a cheap. And I'm not the person at this bar. And I walked on my food, the capital abilities open again. I understand the law, consequences of that. But there was illegal traffic and there was punishment for crime, which kind of sort of thing. Thank you very much for listening. God bless you all. Something else. Terms of law, the CP, there was a homeless person mixed with the big dogs. They first, Capitola struggled and then nervous breakdown. I didn't see how to do this, but I think it's a shame. City of Capitola loves, there are people who are struggling. There's housing, cheaper housing, they cannot hire. The city of Capitola can chip in, and then get people who are less, are less street. And beautiful city of Capitola. Thank you very much for listening. God bless you all.
Thank you. Item five, any staff comments? Any commission comments? None?
I have a question probably for staff, I guess. We, we received a letter on Sunday, March 24th, from John Mulry. And in it, he states, and I'll quote it, "Over, over 10% of our current housing is vacant and unused, paying us nearly nothing in property taxes." I scoured the housing element or inventory, couldn't find such data. I'm sure you can't answer this question now, but if this is true, that one would think it would be, would have to be a significant part of our housing. I don't know. I don't know what to say about it. I just found it kind of odd. This statement is kind of out of the blue.
We can follow up on that. There are vacancies within. This is Community Development Director Katie Hurley speaking. And we can follow up on that. There are vacancies within the city of Capitola, but they definitely pay property tax. But they, they do sit vacant and I can, I can provide you with the data from the latest census on exactly what the current vacancy rate is in Capitola at a future date.
Yeah, I looked in the American Community of Housing Survey, or ACS, from the Census Bureau. It didn't stand out. It wasn't obvious what the vacancy rate was. So if you could get that, I'd appreciate it. Thanks Katie.
Thank you. Any other staff commission comment? There are none. Item six, removing ten to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to, by the planning commission to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion on these items prior to the time the planning commission votes on the action unless the planning commission requests specific items to be discussed for separate review. Items pulled for separate discussion will be considered in the order listed on the agenda. Item A, approval of February 1st, 2024 Planning Commission Meeting Minutes. Item B, approval of February 15th, 2024 Special Planning Commission Meeting Minutes. And item C, approval of March 7th, 2024 Planning Commission Meeting Minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
A second.
Motion and second. We have a roll.
Commissioner SD.
I have to abstain from approving February 1st since I wasn't here, but I approved the other two.
Okay, noted. Commissioner Jensen. Commissioner Westman.
Prove.
Commissioner Wilk.
Prove.
And Chair Christensen.
Prove. Okay, moving on to the public hearing. Public hearings are intended to provide an opportunity for public discussion of each item listed as a public hearing. The following procedure is as follows. First is staff presentation, second, planning commission questions, third, public comment, fourth, planning commission deliberation, and fifth, decision. Item A is 1400 Wharf Road on Capitola Wharf. The project description is a design permit and conditional use permit for the rehabilitation, repair, and expansion of the historic Capitola Wharf. Recommended action is approve the amendments for permit and provide direction to proceed with option two for the layout and location of the donor panels.
And you're going to recuse yourself?
Yeah, I need to recuse and does anybody else I need to recuse?
So since I drew the short straw, I'll take over as the chair. Bring to Katie.
And I'll be recusing myself also.
Yeah. Okay, so I'm recusing based on relation and this. Sorry.
Okay. Good evening, planning commissioners. I'll wait for a city clerk to let me know when it's okay to proceed with my presentation.
You're good to go Katie. Thanks for waiting.
Thank you. Well, it's a pleasure to be back before you tonight for this special meeting. Tonight we'll be reviewing the Wharf project and the latest enhancements for the Wharf. It's been a combined effort with CWEB, the Community Wharf Enhancement Project, and their representative tonight is Gail Ortiz, who's on via Zoom. Also Fuse Architecture is here as they've been putting together the final plans for the Wharf to make sure we have everything laid out and represented correctly within our plans for installation. And I apologize tonight for not being in person, but I've got a little bug and I didn't want to share it with you all. So thank you for allowing me to present from afar. And in here, we're going to jump into it. So tonight for the presentation, I'm going to go over the slides of what's changed since the March 7th meeting. Then I'll have Dan Thompson, or I'll have a representative from Fuse Architecture speak to the, any additional information. And then Gail Ortiz will also speak on behalf of CWEB. Following that, we'll take planning commissioner questions. And then after the planning commission questions, we'll open this for public hearing for the public to speak. So I'll start my presentation. If I can. There we go. So this image in front of you tonight is the, the latest image of the amendment to the design permit and CUP for the Capitola Wharf. On March, as a, just going back, on March 7th, 2024, the planning commission approved the lighting for the Wharf, viewing stations with telescopes, 40 benches, four tables, and 10 trash receptacles. I'm not bringing the specifics of those items into my presentation tonight, but I do have them available on slides if anyone would like to look back at those. So at the March 7th Planning Commission, we got great feedback on direction. For the entry archway, the iconic entry archway for the Capitola Wharf, we, the planning commission asked us to extend the mosaic tile to the cap, removing the dragon image, also allowing the dragon to be implemented into elsewhere within the design. They asked that the, that we decrease the fluted stone to four inches to, to create more space for the artwork on the archway, on the entryway, and to remove the illumination on the pillars. In terms of the gate, the planning commission asked that we remove the city logo on the gate. We were also directed to provide a site plan showing the full layout of the Wharf and where everything would be sighted on, within the, with the Wharf. And then for this, there were two signs proposed, one, a Wharf monument sign and also a Wharf to Wharf monument at the entryway to Wharf Road end, out to the Wharf. And those, they were asked to be removed from the project and whole, so those have been removed. They also asked for additional information on the donor panels, which we have this evening. And then in terms of the bathroom, there was a preference for the vertical wood clad on the bathrooms. So first I want to introduce the artwork that will be done by Kathleen Crissetti. She's going to be doing mosaic tile panels. I have to apologize, the artwork has changed from a bird motif to kelp and an underwater. The, the idea has changed. The representation I have here is the artwork that I, I had on hand, but it's going to change to kelp and an underwater scene as well. So we'll get further into that, but Kathleen Crissetti has been, has gone through three public meetings, a public outreach meetings with Capitola residents and any interested members of the public, and has been getting ongoing design feedback on the Wharf entry panels as well as the donor panels. So it's really exciting. It's, this artwork is evolving as we speak. And tonight you'll be making a, you'll be providing direction on both the panels, her art, her mosaic tile work on the entry archway as well as the mosaics in terms of location and size. The Art and Cultural Commission will be reviewing this, the final design with the actual artwork in a future meeting to come, so this April. So here is the updated entry archway design. The mosaic tile has been extended to the cap. The, the dragons, excuse me, have been relocated to be within the archway. And then the fluted stone on, that flags each side of the mosaic artwork has been decreased to four inches in width and the illumination is no longer included in the pillars. The second request from the planning commission was to remove the city logo from the gate. And as you can see in this image, the city logo has been removed. Actually, I should also specify that we could, I was going to mention that the dragons are in the archway right under the L and the A of Capitola, and the fireball is still between them. So that symbolism of community is still inter, within the archway, but a little less prominent. So Fuse also put together a site plan. With a, created, they've created a full site plan identifying the locations of the water refill station, which is shown in blue. The water refill station will also have a footwash attached to it. The bronze scavenger hunt, which you'll be able to see on future slides a little closer up. And then the viewing stations on the site plan. The viewing stations I have highlighted in yellow. So throughout the, the Wharf, there's going to be a really fun meandering path of bronze art pieces that represent local sea life. The artwork will be reseft and recessed into the Wharf decking, creating a meandering path. The work, the artwork will be done by Sean Mana again, and I apologize if I pronounced that incorrectly, of Bronze Works Fine Arts Foundry. And he's a local Santa Cruz artist. So here's just one example of a bronze rockfish. And these will vary in size and create that man, meandering path, which will go to each of the viewing. And these will vary in size and uh, create that man, meandering path, which will go to each of the viewing stations along the Wharf. I'm gonna sip a little water, I apologize. Um, so within the next five or six images, I've highlighted uh, along the site plan sections of the Wharf. So this, this represents the entry to the Wharf. And in blue, I'm showing the water filled foot stations, and I'm hoping that you can see the bronze fish. They're numbered throughout. There's forty of them along the entire Wharf. So this, on the left of the slide is the entryway. Um, you see the bathroom. And this is the next slide, the yellow is representing a viewing station, the first viewing station. There is um, a corridor going out on the Wharf for cars, and it also makes the Wharf ADA accessible by having a flat surface. So we are being uh, thoughtful in not putting fish on top of that corridor because it's really hard. It would be harder to inlay it into, so you'll notice how the fish kind of jump over the, um, the drive lane there, but the fish lead to the vis- the first viewing station. And this is a more central along the Wharf. You can see more of the fish, fish thirteen through twenty. And then you come upon the second viewing station, which faces out towards uh, Hooper's Beach. And then there's the third viewing station, just before you get onto the head of the Wharf. And then once, once we get onto the very end of the Wharf, uh, the bronze fish are represented in an orange color. And that's because over the next um, six months, we're gonna be going through a planning process for the long-term planning of the Wharf and programming the end of the Wharf and uh, temporary and long-term uses. So we don't wanna, we're thinking we would put uh, prints into the, into the Wharf to represent where the fish will be installed at a later date. But knowing that we're not quite sure what the uses are going to be out there or what their footprints will be, we wanna leave some room um, to make sure that we, we do this right once they are installed. So there'll be prints in paint on the Wharf on a temporary basis until we've identified the footprints of future uses. Um, and then this last slide is the very end of the Wharf. And you can see in yellow the viewing station. Also, um, in green in each of these, uh, slides is where we're expecting that there'll be some type of interpretive artwork. There's a current grant out there and a separate RFP or a, a separate um, contract for that work being done, but we've shown that with each viewing station with these binoculars and a place to sit, there'll also be some, we're, we're expecting to have some educational interpretive um, information on a sign at each of these locations. And I'm gonna go back, sorry. There's, the, also the four squares shown in the middle are the tables. At the time of opening the Wharf, we're planning not to um, affix the tables to the Wharf. At that time, we'll have them so that they can be moved around, so we can really figure out where they belong. Originally, the idea was to have one picnic table with each viewing station, but due to the uh, driving corridor, we cannot fit a picnic table with each viewing station. Um, but hoping to place a picnic table near one of the viewing stations, either at the very end or along the Wharf corridor in order for someone, or, sorry. So we're, we're planning instead to have a bench with each viewing station, and then the picnic tables will be in different locations with the, within the Wharf, knowing that they don't fit correctly with the um, with the drivelands and such. Okay, um, the, uh, another item the Planning Commission asked is for us to come back with more information on the donor panels. Um, we didn't, we've updated the, the site plan to show a few options. So the, under option one, the seven donor panels would be along the entryway into the Wharf on the right, as shown in the yellow highlights. Um, I'm also showing in blue highlight the location of the possibility of ten bike racks. The ten bike racks, we also think can be pushed either further away from the bathroom, and we'll, we'll get into that discussion, but this is flexible and we're looking for Planning Commission feedback tonight. So this is option one with the seven panels located before the entryway. Each donor panel would measure two feet wide by three feet tall. And that spans of um, of the railing as you're entering the, the Wharf is just a little over twenty feet in depth. And I, I did have the opportunity to take each Planning Commissioner out to the site individually to see these, these options and how they would fit, and showed some paper up on the gate or up on the railings that they could understand how they would fit. So this is the image of option one with panels out by the entryway. And as you can see, the area overlooking, um, overlooking uh, Hooper's is free and clear and just the view back to Hooper's Beach on that side, but the panels to the right of the entry. Next, option two is for the donor panels to be located after the bathroom. Um, on the site plan, we show the donor panels, um, after the bike racks. On the actual images we're gonna show you, the donor panels will be where the bike rack location is, and that it would flip, that the bike racks would be beyond the donor panels. So, tonight we, if, if the Planning Commission were to go with uh, staff's recommendation of option two, we would be asking whether or not you would like the ten bike racks next to the bathroom or beyond the donor panels. So here's the site plan showing the donor panels beyond bike racks. And here is um, the image showing the donor panels right after the bathrooms. Here's the entryway, which no longer has the, the panels to the right of the archway. And it shows the panels just beyond the bathrooms. This was staff's preferred um, option, uh, because of the iconic um, Capitola Wharf entryway. And just the, I think we've all, we all have great pictures of this over the time, over time, and we really um, just there was a preference on staff as to keep, to not over, overwhelm the entryway, and then also to create a beautiful place for the donor panels that really stand on their own. The donor panels will have Kathleen Crissetti's artwork, um, that flows with the, the artwork that's within the entryway. They'll, they'll also be, her artwork will be represented in the donor panels. So it really creates two different art or two connected, but placed in separate areas of her artwork and it ties together, but it really allows them to stand on their own, rather than having it all as you're entering the Wharf. Um, the third option for the donor panel is for the donor panel to be right after the bathroom, located facing out towards the water, as shown in that yellow highlight. On this image, you can see the seven by seven, um, donor panel, that's the size of the back of, of that side of the bathroom wall. It would be set a foot or two off of the bathroom wall and would include um, an underwater scene with uh, donor names listed. And I'll, I, I think uh, Gail will be able to provide more details of the artwork and how the donor panels work after my presentation. And here's a, an image of what that donor panel would look like about one foot off of the bathroom. The last item we're asking for direction on tonight is the bathrooms. At our last meeting, the Planning Commission provided direction to um, to go move forward with the vertical wood clad on the bathrooms. And after um, rece- receiving bids on this, the cost of this, um, it's upwards of about twenty-five thousand dollars, that includes installation um, for the bathrooms, and it's kind of a price overrun in terms of our uh, planning for the Wharf enhancements. So tonight we are asking for the Planning Commission that if, um, to, to pick an alternative as a paint color, um, we will try to install the vertical wood clad, but right, as of right now, it's not in the budget. And so we would like to have a second option to, of paint, and these images are real images of the ex-lou bathroom in different colors. Um, shown in block one is a, like a very dark navy blue color. Two is a chrome, three is white, and four is a bronze color. So I'll be asking for direction on that this evening. And I also just wanted to give you a, an image of the water filling foot cleaning station. So here's the water fill station, that there'll be two fountains that are accessible, um, and also a water refill station for water bottles that will be located next to the bathrooms. This comes with an option for a foot cleaning station, just to clean off your feet with water from the sand. Um, that were, will be an add-on at the bottom. So, in terms of updates and in summary, this is the image of what we brought you at the last meeting. And I think your, um, all your recommendations were terrific. I think this design has come a long way. And let me see, sorry. So that was the last meeting, and this is the current design, so a lot more of the art really is more pronounced. Um, the bathroom looks very nice, and the little, little dragons are still there on the archway. So, with that, um, next we'll have Dan Townsend with Fuse Architecture. I'm quickly gonna put on this animation that Fuse put together. And then, once the animation completes, we'll have Dan speak and then uh, Gail Ortiz. And the animation, Dan, you're welcome to comment on this while it's playing. But I do think it go, it goes through all three options.
Okay, I'll wait for it to load. Write my name down.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Need to write my name on here. A little load on that screen as well.
I'll, um, gotta reshare to the other screen, sorry.
I'll wait for it to. Yeah, it's on now.
So this is option two with the panels behind the bathrooms. And then option three, with the panel located looking out towards the ocean. Oh, and this is uh, zooming in on a view station, so you can see the telescope out there.
It's just on a loop now.
Okay, so I'll stop it here.
Yeah, or you can just let it run if you want, this is fine as well, if it'll just keep going.
Okay.
Yeah, my name is Dan Townsend with Fuse Architects. Good evening, commissioners and staff, and thanks Katie for such an organized, uh, uh, great presentation. Uh, we're happy to be back with some of the changes. Um, and we feel like we've, um, followed the direction of the commission. And um, we're, we're happy with the, uh, the outcome. Uh, the options that you're looking at for the donor halls, uh, is what's showing, show now, where we support, uh, staff's recommendation, and I think the commission's, um, has seen this as well. The option two or the donor wall, uh, donor panels being beyond the, uh, the restrooms as the mouth of the Wharf is a little bit narrow there, so it feels good to us. Uh, the panels being on the backside of the bathroom, um, there's some pros and cons to each one, but the pros are definitely that the donor names are more at eye level, um, as you see on the back of the bathrooms, but, um, I don't think it's a design killer either way. It could go with option two or three and, and be very successful as far as the donor panels go. Uh, we're happy to have shown the whole Wharf and the, um, walking path and the scavenger hunt with the fish. Um, it's nice to get in, in the, the view you're seeing here. Uh, one thing to take note of, I'll just share my own opinions, our office opinion on some of the things that we have responded to from planning commission that have popped up in the original, um, presentation that we had on the seventh, we didn't show the light poles. Um, just take note of that light pole that's right behind the gate. Um, it seems a little, I don't think we need it. Uh, there's gonna be a light on the, um, bathroom that might be sufficient. Um, alternatively, my own personal opinion, it's, I don't think we need the light poles at all down the Wharf. Um, I think a, a better solution after seeing, um, our renderings would be to have under rail lighting, uh, that shines down softer. Um, I, I, I know that's part of the C WAP program. You may be opposed to that, but that's just my opinion. I don't think we need the light poles. Something to discuss. Uh, another thing to take note of is we had in the March seventh presentation, there were two signs out of the, the road that's a Capitola Wharf, and one where the, um, Wharf to Wharf Race Monument is. Um, we just took note of the existing sign that's out there says, uh, Capital the Wharf Restaurant Boating and Fishing. Uh, that's not gonna be the case, uh, anymore. So I don't know if you guys wanna discuss that, that maybe the sign is removed. We won't have a restaurant, uh, um, or boating out there, or we could maybe take a look at that. We just had a Capital the Wharf sign there, so either a new sign or something probably needs to be addressed. Uh, otherwise, I'm here for questions. We're very happy with the amount of artwork that's on the columns. It looks beautiful. Proportions wise, another opinion of mine, um, I think the four inches of stone and mosaic is a little off step. I get really picky about those little details. Feels like five inches of stone and the rest mosaic would be, again, not a design killer, but just a proportion thing that, that I look at a lot and our office looks at. Um, I think that's about, that's about it. It's come together very nicely. Katie said, we can, it's an improvement from the seventh till now with the, uh, commission's feedback and staff feedback. So thank you, and I'm here for any questions.
Let's hold questions till the end. And then Gail, go ahead.
Good evening, planning commissioners and staff. Can you hear me? Okay, good. Uh, we want to thank Kath, uh, Katie and Jessica for their help in, uh, redoing, uh, locations for different things on the Wharf. It was really great to work with staff on that, and we just want to recognize Fuse. We all think they did an amazing job on this, um, on these renderings and this design, and we're just pleased, so pleased with it. We just have a few comments having to do with the benches, and I'm gonna read these so that I get them right. The benches that are, that are on the commission's spec sheets tonight, that you see in your staff report, um, are meant to be bolted to the Wharf deck. They are the same benches that the city specified in the original plans. We researched many bench styles and recommended these, that the Wharf visitors are not able to move them around at will, which we feel that they might. Um, we understand it's, uh, the city's intention to be able to move the benches, so we ask for clarity at this meeting on that, whether, because it depends on which, uh, model gets ordered. As far as the tables are concerned, we would prefer that there might be two tables along, somewhere along the run of the Wharf and two tables at the end. The staff is recommending all four at the end. We think that for those people who have mobility issues and, um, and would like to have a, a resting spot along the Wharf, it might be great. We understand that they can't be in the viewing stations, and that's fine, and they couldn't probably be on the left-hand side, because there isn't room um, with the two drive paths, but maybe there's another place for them. If that's possible, it would be great. The, uh, the third thing is the viewing station benches. So we have four donors of twenty-five thousand dollars each who donated to these viewing stations. And we originally told them that there would be, uh, because we had worked with the city on this, that there would be a bench, a table, and the binoculars there. And we understand that the tables can't be there, and that's fine. We can, we can explain to them why they're, why that is. And so, we don't want any tables on any of them, because we don't want one donor to feel like they got more than another, and you know, it, that wouldn't be fair. But we're hoping that the bench, each bench that's at each viewing station not have another, uh, you know, the old plaques that are going on some of the benches. We're hoping that one, those don't not go on the ones that are in the viewing stations, because we think that would be a conflict of interest for these donors that uh, donated twenty-five thousand. So, the benches that are in the viewing stations, we're hoping do not have plaques of previous donors from the old Wharf. Uh, having to do with the donor panels, you received our, our previous letter stating our agreement with the staff option two. Uh, now that we see the site plan, we, there seems to be something in front of option. Uh, now that we see the site plan, we, there seems to be something in front of option three. And it's either the foot washing uh uh water station, or it may also be. Um, the bike loops. I thought it said bike loops. Something is in front of option three, so it gives us even more reason to really encourage. The planning commission to go with option two, and we would prefer that they went after the bike racks. So furthest away from the bathroom. So if it went bathrooms, bike racks, and the donor wall, it would seem appropriate to us. Uh, and as far as the light poles are concerned, I I think under rail lighting would be beautiful. I think everybody would probably agree with that. There's one little glitch, and that is that we did uh with the city's permission, we got donors of ten thousand dollars for each one of those light poles. Their names would go on it. That's an agreement that we have with the city. If planning commissioners feel, this is the first time we've heard this, so if planning commissioners feel that that is a possible option. We might be able to explore other places where we could uh. Recognize those, but those are ten thousand dollar donors. So they're they're fair, they're the second largest donations. And there were ten of them. So um. I'm not sure exactly where we would be able to recognize them that would be as permanent and meaningful as the light, as a light pole. And that's up to the planning commissioners. So I'm also available for questions if anyone has any.
Okay. Staff questions or uh commissioner?
Not now.
Staff, um maybe for Fuse or maybe just staff, I don't know. How how is the car corridor uh demarcated? Is there any special surface or just lines or nothing? Anybody know?
Was the question, how is the drive aisle?
Yeah, how does it, how is it called out? Or is it called out on the, in any way with lines?
Yeah, it's a, it's a special material that um is weather resistant and it it has a thicker density to it. Um, and it's, the surface of it is smooth so that you can um, so wheelchair, it's thirty-six. Each, each drive aisle is thirty-six inches wide to allow for ADA access out to the end of the war.
So the dashed era area on the plans on A A one dot five, that'll be a special material put on top of the timber wharf material.
Yes, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I have one quick question for Fuse Architects. Um. On the illustrations, you're still showing the lights with the longer pole going out where a banner could be hung. And I thought we agreed at our last meeting that we were going to have them with shorter pole. Because there was concern about the, the, you know, the banner pole being there really just.
Yeah, I I apologize. You're you're right. Um, we we pulled graphics from.
Yeah, that's fine.
Modeled um like fixtures, but yes, the commission did agree that there wouldn't be banner uh poles on there. So I apologize, the rendering does show. Just something we grab off a uh.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, it it one one more thing just to comment on um Gail's uh comment about the light poles. Um, when I made that comment about the light poles, I I wasn't aware that there were ten thousand dollar uh donors per like. If there, it is part of the discussion, it's really the one that's right by the gate that just seems out of place. Um, if if we stick with light poles, um, I don't know if you can pull it up Katie or not, but that the uh image of the front, you'll see it. It looks like the gate's gonna swing into the light pole. It just seems out of place if we can maybe relocate that. And I don't mean to make that a big part of this discussion, but um, we just noticed it. It just seems like we either don't need that one or it can be relocated.
Yeah, Katie, I'd appreciate that if you did pull that up. Because I would like to see that again.
I can do that. As I'm getting there, I will say the location of the light poles are based on the existing location of light poles. And where the um wiring has been run to historically, but that. So yes, there, there you can see the one light pole right by the entry.
In the way. So question then for for uh Ms. Ortiz, um the ten thousand dollars. Each, each light pole is associated with a ten thousand dollar donor. So if we lose one, we have a one donor to deal with?
Yes.
Okay. Um, you're done with your questions. I have a few. So um, yeah, um, Ms. Ortiz, since you're on the line, I I, this whole donor methodology, um. I'd like to understand better. You mentioned twenty-five thousand dollars associated with viewing stations, so I'm assuming that they uh. Those donors will be recognized at each of the viewing stations. You mentioned the light poles. Uh, each donor will have their name somehow recognized on the light poles. Um. It. Are they also on this donor plaque? You, how how? How was, how was that nego- how the whole thing negotiated? Twenty-five dollars, you get to, you get a free pizza at fifty dollars, you get your name on the, you know, how did?
That was negotiated with the city council, um working with the staff, and it was presented to the city council and at a me, at a public meeting and uh it. The, the donor opportunities were uh spelled out and approved by the city council. Uh, specific things were specific amounts of money, very similar to the way we did it with the library. The largest donors that that uh donated, you know, upwards, ten thousand, twenty-five thousand dollars. Not only get their name on something, but they also have it on the donor wall. Donors of uh lesser amounts only have their name on the donor wall. So we're, we followed the the same uh methodology that we used for the library.
Okay, so I guess what the purpose of the question was, I I would think that whether we choose option two or three. Um. Could be affected by what was promised to the donors.
No, uh, so all the, all the donors would be on option two or three.
Okay, so they, s- so there wasn't any um promises of location or the size of their name?
We did, we did talk to them about it being, you know, before the gate. But we, after seeing the, you know, going out there with staff, uh we wholeheartedly agree with staff that. Before the gate just puts too many good things all in one spot. Why not spread it out? And have also have that beautiful gate work that Fuse did and the artwork that'll be on it be the main thing when people walk through. So. Um, I think our main concern with number three is that there's going to be something in front of. Well, it's near a bit, nearer a bathroom, which is probably not, not the best location. Um, and it's um. There seems to be something in front of it, and we would hate to have something blocking the view of the artwork. That just wouldn't make sense. So I don't, I'm not sure. Exactly, maybe Katie can tell us what that freestanding white thing is. Is it, is it of the foot washing uh? Uh, drinking fountains or is it a bike pole?
Yes, so that is the foot washing, uh, the drinking fountain, but that, if we were to put, go with option three. Um, we would put that in a different location because it makes no sense to have that right in front of it. So. Um, that was just uh an oversight and there wasn't enough time to fix that in the.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, that would, that would, you know, that would make option three more palatable. Um. I think we're still wanting to go with option two because the artist liked option two the best, and we'd like to honor her. Uh, vision of the donor wall, but it's up to the planning commission. The location and is up to the planning commission. The artwork itself is up to the Art and Cultural Commission.
So the um, you don't feel that the donors would feel upset uh with one option versus the other?
I can't, no, I don't think so. I think both of, both of them would be beautiful. Um, she'll do a good job with either one of them. And I mean, the the back of the bathroom wall was originally my idea. Why don't we put it all in one large thing? And I think Katie was right that it, it is, or it was, maybe it was Dan that said it would be at eye level and a a larger scene. So you know, it may, it may even be cheaper to install the the frame part of it too. So I don't know. I think either one would be fine.
You also mentioned the uh, you prefer the or like the idea of the lighting underneath the railing as opposed to the poles. Was that discussed at the C WAP and did they have an opinion or say you just?
Tonight's the first time we've heard that and uh we would, you know, it would be problematic for us because we, I don't, I can't. I think there's something sort of uh permanent and and uh. Solid about a freestanding, uh you know, their name would be right on the base of the light poles. There, there is a a. Component that gets built into the light pole for that. So having their name somewhere. On, it could be, you know, if it were on the railing, there's gonna be a lot of probably other, I'm not sure, but the city may have the old. Uh, you know, donor plaques on the railing the way we used to have, and that wouldn't, you know, that, those people paid. I don't know how much, a a hundred or a thousand or five hundred or whatever. It wouldn't, that wouldn't be fair. Where would we put those? So. Uh, it's, it, that is fairly problematic for us. It's, it's a, it's a hundred thousand dollars we've raised for that.
Okay, thank you. Um, maybe one other question. I don't know whether this is for you or for Fuse. But the donor walls that were shown in the illustrations don't show any artwork at all, so I'm having a hard time imagining what they're really gonna look like.
Right. They are, the, so that you, you know what the the walls are gonna, the um panels are gonna look like on the gates. That's more representative of the artist's work. It will be similar to that work, but it won't have quite as much kelp because we've already got kelp represented, but it would be. Sort of an underwater scene because each donor name will be in the shape of a glass fish. That is running through the scene. So it would be, um, you know, there probably would be some starfish on the, I mean, I I don't know what she's gonna do, but I envisioned there'd be some. Sand on the bottom, some starfish. You'd see water, wa- waves at the top. The larger donors would be at the top. The um, you know, the big, the whales, they're not gonna be whales, but you know what I mean? The bigger ones, and then the minnows at the bottom. Um, so does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. That, you've been very helpful. Uh, I do have a question of staff regarding, we had a letter that came in from a Mr. Sawyer. Um, proposing a design. And it kind of begs the question, could you just repeat quickly how Fuse was selected as our design um designer of choice?
Sure, um, this is Director Hurley. Um, Fuse was selected. During the initial process for the wharf reconstruction. So Fuse has been on contract with the city going back to, I think it's twenty twenty. In which we entered a contract and RFP was put out and they were uh selected by the city. So they have a a valid contract with the city for doing the work.
Thank you. Um, and then um. You mentioned the bathroom that that um this planning commission. And C WAP preferred the the wood siding, but it was a cost problem, twenty-five K. Um, and you mentioned tonight that you would try to um. Adhere with that request, but would like a, would like a um, a backup plan. So two things. One is, um, I'm assuming twenty-five K is just a ballpark estimate. We try to get it for less than that. And that the savings we might have accrued from eliminating the monuments at the, at the entrance of the wharf might. Might be able to juggle the budget that way and and somehow uh. And somehow get that bathroom worked properly. Um, but is the point that budget is still in flux and you're still not sure what you can and can't do?
So I really appreciate that question. Um. So we have kind of fine tuned the budget, um, because costs have gone up since the initial. Um, bids came into play and there's also a cost associated with change orders. Um, so this, the, the overrun is real and it does go beyond the city's budget at this time. Um, so at this point, unless we were to. Uh. Acquire more funds or take another portion that, that, when, when we did, we were, when we looked at the um, the budget, we removed. The signs at the entryway. Um, we also like, we've reevaluated um the whole project based on exactly what's before you tonight. So this would be a budget overrun and that is why we are looking for feedback. Um, on possibly painting the bathrooms and. I can definitely bring back other colors at a future date if none of these colors are satisfactory, but at this time, that would, that. That siding would take us twenty-five thousand over budget. That was based on um Fuse. Getting a bid uh from local contractors for the installation. Is my understanding and I uh. Director Khan is in the room if, if, if I'm wrong, but I, it, I do know that we got an official, that we got a bid on the siding and it was. At twenty-five thousand beyond budget.
Okay, thank you. Um, last question on the um. Uh, on the entry, entryway where we asked for the monuments, the monument sign to be removed. Um, we talked about palm trees, placing two palm trees in there. Um, I know that was discussed. At a planning commission meeting a long time ago, but. Uh, the, the two palm trees were, were a suggestion, but it would, they weren't actually voted on as I recall the meeting. Um, and I would hope that he, well, my question I guess is, do you feel constrained to put in two palm trees in there based on? Um, planning commission requests or some notion that that was our direction?
Didn't we give them that direction when we did the tree removal permit for the two pine trees?
When I reviewed, when I reviewed the uh meeting, and it's actually, I looked at the video. We talked about it, we suggested it, and then uh Steve Jesburg said, well, we certainly could do that. But we have a tree replacement program. This is all gonna be part of the study. And we voted that, okay, you know, we, we didn't specifically e- express that we wanted two palm trees there. We were okay with his approach of, that's an option, and there's gonna be this tree replacement program that he's committed to. So I think we, you know, if if we really insist on two palm trees and frankly, I'm, it might be a little crowded, we should, we should bring that up again.
Yeah, I, I think um. You know, my rec- uh, I'll confess, I haven't gone back and looked at it recently, but my recollection was that we were taking two trees out. And we were going to have those two trees replaced. Um, and uh, because we had some members of the public that were interested in that as well. Um, so I think if we're going to change that, we do need to, you know, sort of bring it back and talk about that again.
My question to staff, is that your, is that your understanding as well?
The, the area in which the planting, where the trees were removed and we were planning on replanting there is actually. Um, very small palm trees planted in that area, and my understanding is that the request is to bring back more significant. Palm trees along our entry corridor. Um, I would, I I can definitely come back to the planning commission with more information on that, but palm trees. I think there's the ability to plant two in that area because of their, the way that they grow um in their root system. But if it, if it's a matter of it being too crowded in terms of aesthetics, um, we can definitely find another spot for the, the second palm tree. Uh, there is quite a, a, a number of palm trees along that entry corridor into Capitola and then across the street. There's different trees, so I don't think it's appropriate really to throw a palm tree across the street um before you go over the Stockton Bridge. But we, if you'd like, I'm happy to look at other options and bring that back. Uh, maybe on a director's report to tell you about other replanting options.
Uh, I'd be okay with that. Uh, and since we're at that location with regards to what if uh Fuse Architects recommended. That the existing sign there, I'm assuming that the plan is to have that removed?
At this time, we were not planning on removing the sign. Uh, it does, it, it serves a purpose in terms of letting people know where the Capitola Wharf is. Um, there was the idea of uh also installing directional signs, so we haven't gotten to that. We haven't had time to. Get that far yet, but I think once we have a replacement sign, that sign would be removed, but at this, at this period or this juncture. We have no plan to remove that sign until we have something in its place uh approved that. Is a good directional sign for the public in, to identify where.
As was pointed out, it's misleading now since there's no restaurant or bait shop there. So it's something to consider. I won't, I won't belabor that. All right, those are my questions. Any other questions? By all means, let's move on to uh public hearings. Are the members of the public wish to? Are the members of the public wish to weigh in on this topic? Please come forward to the microphone, state your name, and if you want your name on the record, place your name on the sheet there.
Good evening, Karen Hannah. So just two main issues that I wanted to speak to tonight. The location of the donor wall, pretty much exactly what I said at the last hearing. I would hope that, and I guess this also could go for the benches and tables, a little bit of flexibility could be reserved for final placement once the area is completed. And because it's a little bit hard to tell from the drawings thus far, where the little bulb outs are and things like that. Personally, I think that the best location for the bike loops is right behind the bathrooms. It's at the beginning of the Wharf, people might put their bikes there and then go down to the beach. It's a great location for it. I'd like to see the donor walls a little bit separated from that so that they really get, they can really shine on their own and not have a lot of hardware around them. So I would assume that the donor walls will be one of the very last things that might go up and that the placement might be fine tuned at that time. But I definitely support having it in the six to seven panels as opposed to the one big panel. And part of that is because, brings me to my second issue, which is the bathroom. So I have a craft gallery and craft gallery annex downtown. We just finished working, redoing the whole front of the, one of the buildings, had to replace all the window hardware trim around it, big window, repair some stucco. And it's only been a couple of weeks, and already people who have leaned their bicycles up against the wall have scratched the paint off, and now we see the base color through. So you can imagine that that painted bathroom, after everybody's banged into it and thrown their bicycles against it, it's going to be brown or whatever color and blue. And if it's painted now, it's going to have to be painted again in a few years. It probably won't get painted because the city won't have the money, but it will need to be painted. So I think they should bite the bullet, put the wood cladding on it now, make it look good. You all saw the picture from the Venetian courts of what that blue bathroom looks like. It's a prominent feature of their view corridor, and I think the city owes it to everyone to make it look as good as possible and find another way to save a few thousand dollars and make that affordable.
My name is Kiki Haley, I'm a resident here. I have four comments, first of all, practical one, it shows the gate swinging to the left. There's nothing to support it at that point in time. So I understand why it doesn't swing to the right so you could attach it to the bathroom for when you're working with it. Seems more a practical solution to me. Secondly, I totally agree with the comment about the bathroom. I would wonder if the city staff has ever set down, done a forward-looking projection of what the annual maintenance cost is going to be for painting over time versus just doing expenditure at one time upfront. The last two are mostly kind of just my comments. One thing, you know, on the artwork, if you go to Monterey Bay Aquarium, if you go to Disney World, whatever, they spread the attractions or the art throughout the facility to get you to kind of move around and go from there. So I'm kind of, I don't understand, and I've been on some of the meetings, I don't understand why all the artworks come together in one big piece. And so maybe I'll, so you can educate me on that. It seems to me that spreading it throughout the Wharf would lead to people moving around and doing that. And then the last one, I do like the ideas of the under the rail. But I totally understand Gail's comment about the light poles. Again, my only comment would be, as the city, any type of evaluation of what the potential storm damage and resistance for those poles will be for the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joe Pollin, I don't know if I'm on the list or not, but I wanted to clarify a couple of things. The light poles that you saw in the render are the light that you've recommended. The arm is there that it's going to allow the light to go on the Wharf instead of over the water. So that arm is not for banners, it's the arm for the air. Does that make sense? And I agree with the comment about that one odd light on the left. I think it does look kind of weird with the arch. And finally, oh, and finally, I would like to also agree with the other speakers about the bathroom. I think that's the first thing we'd see. It'd be terrible to see a blue striped, brown, blotched bathroom. That would, wood clad, beautiful, and I think it's really, it's the first building we see. And I think it's important. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, let's bring it back to council deliver, or rather committee, mission deliberations.
Where do you want to start?
With you. Oh, well.
Why don't we do the donor wall, the bathroom, and then, because those seem to be the big.
Okay, good idea.
I'll start then. I came into the meeting thinking option three behind the bathroom is probably the best, but then looking at the, listening to people, I think option two makes good sense. Some flexibility as to how the separation from the bike loops, bathroom and the donor wall, I think needs to be considered in the final actual placement of these. I would do the bathroom, bike loops and the donor wall, but separate them out so the people aren't leaning their bikes up against the donor wall, because that would kind of ruin. That would be my recommendation.
Well, I would agree with you. I would like to see some flexibility, like you said, it seems like they ought to put in, you know, the bathrooms there, and then put in the bike rack, and then go out and look and figure out, you know, does the donor wall need to be eight feet from the bike racks, ten feet from the bike racks, you know, sort of have some flexibility, just say that it's going to go in that general area.
So let me disagree. I also think that option three is the way to go initially, and I still think so. And I, we keep talking about the artwork. I don't think a donor wall is artwork. I think it is, is it obstructs the view. So when little Timmy wants to see the little sea lions out there, he can't because there's a donor wall in his way. So that's why I was wondering, I certainly don't want to offend the donors, but I think keeping the names of the donors out of the view lines, which would be putting them on the bathroom wall, would be the best way to acknowledge them, but not to interfere with the Wharf experience, which is all about looking at the ocean. And.
I have to, I thought that initially as well, but then looking at the bathroom placement, you're sure, you know, sure shooting, some bikes are going to be piled up against that thing, and nobody's going to see them. I almost guarantee a little kid, you know, Eddie or whatever, is going to come along and put their bike there, whatever, and it'll be blocked. So I, I don't think you're going to, that's going to happen if we put it along the rails of the Wharf.
And for me, I see this more as artwork in that the committee that has raised this money is spending a significant amount of money to have the donors' names incorporated in a piece of art that's going to be done by the artist who's going to do the columns.
That's true on both options.
And so for me, I'm sort of looking at it more as, you know, artwork and recognition of donors.
Well, what about then, about the comment from the member of the audience who said, well, if it's artwork, then why don't you space it out?
Well, I think that's the reason we moved it from the entry point of the Wharf, where the archway columns are, to go further down the Wharf. So it is, so it is being spread out. But for me, I like option two, I like the sort of breaking up the panels rather than having one big wall, so.
So we've got, we've got two option twos and one option three. That sounds like a resolution. Let's move on then to the bathroom.
All right. Bathroom, and all the pictures I've looked at up until a couple of recent ones have been wood clad. I don't see why we would ever change from wood clad to bright blue or black or white or gray or whatever, pink or whatever color we would want to use. I mean, $25,000 is approximately 0.25%, probably a little bit less once we finish this project, the entire project funding. I wouldn't skimp on this wood personally.
I agree with you again.
Oh, Peter's gonna.
Well, I, I think what I'm hearing is that they're looking for an option. And we're saying, well, okay, we're, there's only one option. And regardless of there's money or not, and if there's no money, obviously, it's going to stay perwinkle blue until the money's there, which might be a long time. So we might want to give them an option to at least paint it until we can get the money to put the wood up.
One thing I've learned about city projects is if you don't do it, when you originally build the project, it will never happen. There's no such thing as temporary in this city.
That's fair.
So I would, I would like to see them go ahead and do the wood cladding on the wall. I went out there and I was with Gail and Jessica and Katie, and we talked about painting it. I was sort of going, oh, yeah, okay, well, that might be okay if you come up with the right color. And then I went home and thought about it, and I think if we're going to do it, we want to do it right. I think $25,000, if that's the cost of it, is, as Paul mentioned, a very minute part of the budget for the whole Wharf. And we're spending millions of dollars out there. I think the bathroom is going to be the most used feature on the Wharf. It's been desperately needed for a long time, and I think we've got to do it right and do the wood painting.
And as Joe pointed out, the first thing you see when you walk out there is the bathroom, and it really needs to be put, because everything else beyond it.
I think, all right, let's all agree on that then, all right?
Okay.
Find the budget, put the wood on. Okay, other topics that have been brought up, things like the light poles, should, versus under railing lighting? Seems to me that we could keep all the light poles, but maybe just find a way to move that one to a different, or space them differently. Is that something that you could, okay, I hear, I see a nodding from the architects, so.
The light pole number one has a clearance of about a foot from the gate based on the PlanView A1.0 that Fuse presented. It doesn't hit the light pole, it's close to it.
And I don't have any opinion which way the top swings. I mean, I think that's an engineering thing, and for people who are going to work on the Wharf. So, you know, they can look at that, but I don't think we're saying it has to go one way or the other. Figure out what's best for how the Wharf operates.
So I'm taking that as direction, keep the light poles, see if we can find better spacing so that it's more aesthetic. Okay? Benches being bolted down was a topic.
Well, I had a question about that, because when I looked at the plans, I thought the only benches, they were not talking about bolting down, were the ones at the very end of the Wharf. Could somebody tell me whether or not that is correct?
Yeah, I can clarify on that. The benches at, all benches will be secured to the Wharf. The four picnic benches at the end of the Wharf are not going to be secured. They can be bolted in, but they will not be bolted in in the beginning as we figure out the correct placement for those benches.
You mean the picnic table?
The picnic tables, yep, sorry. But all benches will be facing outward and secured to the Wharf. And we can definitely work with the suggestions that Gail suggested tonight of two picnic benches along the route out to the head of the Wharf. But we have no plans at this point to bolt them down until we have a better idea of the long-term plan for the Wharf. That's the picnic tables.
So we have flexibility on the picnic tables.
Right.
Which I think is what everybody wants, and, you know.
And then, can I provide a little more clarity on one other item that was brought up tonight? There was mention of the donor plaques on benches. And tonight, we cannot take direction on location of donor plaques on the benches or the railings. The city council was very clear that all existing donor plaques that are on the railings and benches come back. We will take into consideration the comments made this evening for how to, first, I need to, we've got to do our complete inventory and see how many benches and plaques were accounted for prior, because they all need to come back. And I'll work with CWEB and keep the communication going on exactly what that number is and how to resolve this issue of viewing stations and benches and plaques. So, but we're in the process of creating a plaque memorial administrative policy. And I really, I think that's an item that I really need to take before city council, and it wouldn't be appropriate for us to interfere with that process at the planning commission right now, because they are working on an administrative policy. But I can definitely continue to work with Gail, and I understand the concerns of CWEB with the larger donors in the viewing stations and making sure they're adequately represented in those areas. There's just a lot more going on there in terms of lots of donor plaques, so.
You have adequate direction then from the commission, or do you need a motion?
The, I think I would like a motion regarding just approval of the amendments to the design permit as directed this evening. And I am clear on your direction, so thank you.
So I'm, I'll try, or you want to go ahead?
Go ahead.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion that the donor wall be option two with the staff and CWEB having flexibility to make adjustments to the exact location of the panels in relation to the bike racks. That the bathrooms have the wood on the exterior, is shown on the plans. That the light pole at the entry be evaluated for its exact location to make certain that it doesn't interfere with the gate opening and is in an appropriate place. Anything else we need to include?
It's good enough for me. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, should we have a roll call vote?
Should go quick. Commissioner Westman.
Aye.
Commissioner Will.
Ooh.
And Commissioner Estee.
Aye.
Motion passes two to one. All right, let's move on to then item B, 722 Escalona Drive, and take a five-minute break while the rest of the commission comes back.
Well, somebody said Friday was gonna be a bigger rain than today. I know. Well, it's not against the law for you to listen. Yeah.
And wet, huh? Still winter.
Well, Katie didn't sound too good. Katie didn't sound too good. Okay.
Wait, 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 you know, how boring can a planning commission be that's always unanimous? Yeah.
Okay, welcome back. Is everybody ready? All right, moving on to Brian or uh staff ready? I think Sean. Okay, moving on to uh planning hearing, item B is seven two two Escalona Drive. And the project description is a tree removal permit for a removal of thirty five trees located within the planned development zoning district. This project is in the coastal development zone but does not require a coastal development permit. Recommended action is approve application based on the attached conditions and findings for approval.
Thank you and good evening. A couple of quick notes before we get started. We have two applications that are going to look very similar to each other, back to back. They're both for trees. They're both in the same general. And uh they were both even reviewed by the same arborist. Uh, I did get some questions leading up to the meeting. I wanted to clarify the first one, which was that uh our staff report for the Escalona Avenue, or sorry, the Park Avenue trees. Uh, we stated that all the trees are on city property. That is technically true, however, two of them are growing on city and RTC San Diego County property, grown into, they've been identified by both the city and the RTC. At this time, the city is electing to pursue removal of them. Both these reports are going to be be short and sweet. Uh, you have some robust papers reporting on it and hopefully I can answer any questions you have tonight. So with that, uh, the application for you, as mentioned, is a tree removal permit for approximately thirty five trees. It's located at seven twenty two Escalona Drive. This is a land of development zoning district serving a single family residence. Doesn't take me one moment. So as noted in the staff report, the site is enveloped by densely packed grove, prominently blue gum, this, some other varieties wrecked in the middle. Above, we have the proposed tree removal plan. Staff has also superimposed an estimated boundary of the environmentally sensitive habitat area that overlaps with this site. It's for the Escalona Gulch Monarch Cove Butterfly Habitat. And as you can see, a number of the trees proposed removal and read, about fifteen of them are located within or right along the boundary of of that that habitat area. I also went ahead and noted uh several larger red circles. Those trees are trees that since the original reporting have either fallen down of the on a cord or been removed under emergency permitting due to hazardous condition. Uh, as I just mentioned before, since the original review of this site by the arborist in late twenty twenty three and publishing the staff report, approximately seven trees have come down on the on a cord on this site. See some of the photos taken by the arborist above. Um, they've also removed a couple additional trees uh prophylactically as they were damaged or also showing signs of imminent failure. Uh, of the trees listed for removal, six of them are displaying a risk of failure as well, either to property or external safety or falling down bluff. Those trees are proposed removal for those conditions. Remaining trees are are being proposed removal under the grounds of buyer risk reduction and forestry management. The uh trees, majority of the trees listed in that in that group are predominantly narrower uh trees with minimal canopy and having a poor to fair health compared to some of the more mature, taller, healthier, larger canopy trees on this site. These are all conditions of of overcrowding and over competition among them. They're not really meant to grow this this dense. With that same thinking because of it, staff is also not recommending that we have uh replacement requirements. Oh, sorry. Apparently, this isn't being shared on Zoom. One moment. My apologies. Okay. As I was saying, uh, because of the the density of the site and the fact that the majority of the trees that would be removed have uh lesser canopy and and much of that canopy would be restored over time. Staff is not recommending replacement requirements on this site. Uh, they, as it is, would maintain a canopy coverage that's well in excess of what's required. And with that, staff is recommending approval of the application uh as proposed, conditioned, and with the findings attached.
Thank you. Any planning commission questions?
I have a couple of just general questions, maybe about, well, we talked about, just, I think they're general general questions about process. Um, so one thing, uh, could you um, could you just review the process uh that the city has with tree removal permit process and how planning does get involved in that?
Just general administrative.
Yeah, when that's a a we've had questions like, why is it going to planning? You know, and when does it go to planning? Does it go to city council and that kind of thing? And maybe just a quick overview to.
Sure, sure. Thanks. A quick overview, most tree removal applications start at staff level, many end at the staff level. That was the intention of the code. Um, they're initially submitted to the planning department. We work with them at the front counter to or, you know, perhaps remotely email um to assess what they're proposing, just to see offhand, is this an environmentally sensitive area or is this just a run of the mill tree near a foundation, what have you? Um, provided it seems like a typical application, they submit, we route that to our public works department. Our superintendent and inspector Ed Morrison will take a look at the trees. It's a courtesy inspection of the site. And based on what the applicant puts on their form, as well as what the inspector can see in the field, if he can make findings consistent with our code, we'll go ahead and begin processing their application. Um, if we cannot do so, then we'll let them know. And at that point, they have the option to provide additional information, which can help us confirm that there are uh good cause reasons for removal, or they can submit a deposit with the city for an arborist review. Um, after that point, if we still can't make findings uh with that technical input, then we will formally deny the application and the applicant would have the opportunity to appeal it to to planning commission and then in turn to city council if also denied a planning commission. In the case of these two applications, um, they were taken more due to the scale of the of the applications. It's highly irregular for us to see anything more than a half dozen trees in a given application or location. Um, both of these are well in excess of that. The for the second one is a city application. We often will take our own applications, even if it's something that could technically be approved administratively uh before city council or the planning commission in the interest of uh public input and disclosure and and difference to the decision.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I just wanted to make sure this is the same process that's been going on for many times. Administrative, then it goes to planning and then it can't get appealed to a council level at a different time.
In the case of this application, it's.
Any application, just a random, any tree, that's the process that the city's always had.
Uh, correct, since at least the uh adoption of the the ordinance in its current form in two thousand and four.
Perfect, thank you. Um, and then um next part, what about the monarch butterfly and issues with that overall with with um, I know this couple areas might be sensitive to that. Was that taken into consideration and discussed and reviewed?
It was. This was one of the questions that did come up prior to the meeting. Um, the habitat area, it's established, it does identify monarchs in this area as being the the principal interest of why we have a habitat zone established. Uh, there are, there are circumstances and standards that are put in our code to say when a biological consultant may need to be brought in uh prior to the the city supporting or approving removals. However, that whole provision in our code seventeen sixty four oh five oh is predicated on the assumption that these removals are being caused due to new development uh construction work and and they're not focused on the removal for the purposes of of good cause for risks uh for the for the removals and of the sake of the removals. So that's what makes this application a little unique as well in this zone. Um, like the code does allow these even to potentially be approved administratively, but we felt more comfortable deferring the judgment to the planning commission in this case. Insofar as the applicability of of protections, because there still are some even when there's a good cause. Uh, it, the code specifies more on the timeframe of removals. There's a overwintering or roosting period that monarchs typically uh and fairly rigorously follow, which is from October to March. Um, so if you were to prove this application tonight, they would not be able to act on it until April, um, which would be consistent with that, with that uh limitation on that timeframe. Um, otherwise, it, unless there's reason to believe there'd be a a particular issue at the time, there it's not required by code to uh require a biological consultant. That said, we we do have a condition prepared if the planning commission would like to entertain it. And uh, I can get into that if if anyone would like me to.
And these are just generalized questions I have. And then, I'm sorry, I just have one more. Um, and you made a note that about some of the trees, I know in the staff report and some part of staff report, it says it's not in the rail corridor and then there might be, you said, a clarification, you said two, but um, you guys looked at the overview of the trees that are being removed are, as I read through the arborist report, was due to safety recommendations and those sort of things. And this is in no way connected with the future, if there's a future for the rail trail um overlay or in that. And this, these are strictly from the recommendations from a safety standpoint as I I've read it. Is that correct?
So I I believe you'd be referring to the the next uh application, the city's uh tree application. However, in both cases, this uh the the next application as well as the uh Escalona Drive, uh, yeah, neither are are in regard to RTC plans. Um, in fact, this one, I'm not sure this property even directly abuts the RTC corridor.
Yeah, there's just a mention in in there that said rail corridor. So I was just, it's just a general question. I just wanted to clarify those issues. So thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, moving on to public comment. If anybody would like to speak on this topic. Do it. If you could write your name at the on the.
Okay, is there a pencil here?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead.
So I just will say, first of all, I love trees and and um but I do understand about the eucalyptus trees, they are not native. And that area that we're, you just talked about on Escalona. I mean, it's basically a weed patch of eucalyptus trees that are unstable because they're competing so much. They have a very short root base and they're falling. And I have been here for forty years now, walking with those trees in the storms. So that's one area. I happen to live across the street from some really large ones. And, you know, I love those trees. And right now, we're watching the red shoulder hawks build a nest and there's there's habitat there. However, I feel like it's getting really dangerous. Um, and what I would really like to see is those trees removed and native plants. So I don't know if that could ever happen. And I don't know if the city of Capitola is, has to pay for that. I, and I'm not sure, when you guys did the sewer project, was that the county or was that Capitola? They took the three trees out in front of um three ten Park Ave. Does anyone remember that?
SoCal Water District, because that's a well for the salt water penetration. That's why they take those trees out. They had to drill down.
Right. And I know, I mean, we watched them take them down and I I believe, if I'm correct, was fifteen thousand dollars per tree. That was a long time ago. So I know it's going to be a lot of money. Um, from what I understand is you're, they're talking about maybe limbing some of them up, opening up, some will be removed and then some will be trimmed. I know that eucalyptus trees, if they're topped, it gets worse, but I don't think that they were talking about that because they will send up suckers and they'll actually be very thick, the canopy, and it makes those trees even more dangerous. So I, you know, I think we do need to approach it. Um, the monarch butterflies. I was devastated when that happened, when they took those trees out, because we used to see. Because we used to see hundreds and hundreds of the monarchs. And then those trees were taken out, there were like three of them, I think. And that was over by El Salto. And I remember the city council just really, oh, okay, just being upset about it. But the bottom line, the trees were already taken out and there was nothing anyone could do. So I do notice that there are butterflies there, but they're not the same trees. And the monarchs come back to those same trees all the time. So it is starting to build, but it's not like it was before. So, I mean, does that make sense when I'm saying that I don't know how important it is to think about the monarch? You know, I mean, they're, yeah, they're population at that point. Okay, sorry.
Thank you. Chair, could I just request a brief recess? The community television technician needs to reset their system. Take five.
Technical problems.
Why does it cost $25,000 to put paneling on a bathroom?
Katie, just so you're aware, we had a sound issue on our end here in our community. The television tech had to reset the feed on their end so it could pick things up. Sorry to leave you in the dark.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
That also served as our sound check, so hopefully it's working now.
Do you want us to talk and just?
He wouldn't mind, so we can help speed things along. I feel like our technology, you guys were just talking about how we don't know what 15 or 20 years from now will look like. God hope that we don't have technology issues like we do now. I'm not sure, but, um, maybe it's because it's raining. I know I don't like doing anything when it's raining, but.
That's the verdict, Brian, how's it going?
Rule on that, yep, we have audio to hold the meeting.
We don't need audio to hold the meeting, so we could proceed if you guys wanted to. It would affect the video record potentially of this meeting. But the good news is that we have recordings of the video feed through Zoom and the sound seems to be working fine on that end. So we can always re-upload footage. Hopefully we could piece together the whole meeting so that it would somehow all line up. But legally speaking, there is nothing preventing us from continuing the meeting. I will just let the commission know that the members of the public who are watching our meeting through community television will not be able to hear anything further if you choose to continue. However, our Zoom recording is working just fine and that will be re-uploaded to the city's YouTube account following the meeting. So that should be non-problematic. But it would mean that people watching live through community television wouldn't be able to hear you.
Should we give her maybe five more minutes and then try?
Not more.
No more.
More than five.
I think the April is really, isn't it pretty fast? Yeah. Yeah, maybe.
I just assumed get, get going.
That's right, let's do that, okay, thank you. All right, I think we. Yeah. No, I don't watch my. Oh, they do. Okay, please, try not to.
I don't want to go back.
No. I can't handle it, it makes me.
We'll send you clips of your own meeting. Who knows who I am?
Just to provide you guys a quick status update, they weren't able to resolve the audio issue. They also informed me that the audio is not in fact working on Zoom. So it does mean that any form of broadcasting that we're doing right now would not have a sound recording. Again, we're not legally obligated to broadcast the meeting. Like you, somebody stated earlier, we did it for decades without any type of audio visual broadcasting. So legally speaking, we can continue the meeting. But just note that there would be no audio or visual, or there would be a visual recording of the meeting, but there would be no audio, or audio recording of the meeting.
Julia, this is Katie and I can hear you just, I can hear everyone.
Yeah. I think it's for the broadcasting purposes, like internally, Katie, I'm not, I'm not an expert in this. I'm just, I'm on what the experts have told me.
It does look like our Zoom is recording, so.
It is, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, so up to you guys. At your disposal, they do have another technician coming out. It's going to be approximately 10 minutes for him to come out here and then another, I'd say five to 10 minutes for him to troubleshoot. So it would be a longer wait period, so up to you on how you want to proceed.
You're taking minutes?
I am.
I think she's a good minute taker.
Yeah, I think we're, if everybody's all right with us proceeding.
Just a question, has, is it, did it just happen now? So the previous items were all recorded?
Up to the last, like, minute of our public speaker's comments were being recorded.
Thank you. All right, we're, let's pick up where we left off. We're doing, we're going through item B. I think it was planning, public comment.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So we had one public comment, thank you. And then anybody else would like to speak? Nope, hearing none. Okay, moving on to planning commission deliberation. Anybody have any comments?
Well, I, sure, I looked into, I had a lot of questions about this and both items. And all my questions were satisfied. This is, this is not clear-cutting a forest. This is thinning a eucalyptus grove on private property that has more than 30% canopy coverage. So there's, you know, the monarch butterfly concern has been addressed. Safety concerns are paramount. I, I see no reason why we shouldn't approve this.
No, I had, I had some concerns about the monarchs also, but I talked to Sean and I think my concerns about the butterflies.
It's not being recorded. Excuse me, Commissioner Westman, I don't think your mic is on. Sorry.
So I need it on?
On the off chance that we are recording sound, let's, let's just go.
And, you know, I also had concerns about the monarch butterflies. And know that there's a piece of property located next to this one. It's owned by the state of California, which was purchased to help protect the monarchs. So I think with the combination of that property and this private property, there's adequate, you know, locations for, for the monarchs to go back. And I, I think this will ultimately help them by allowing larger, healthier trees to grow.
Completely agree with Commissioner Westman. Is there a motion? Or I'm sorry, is there any more?
Do you have other comments?
There, do we have a motion?
I move approval of staff recommendation.
And I will second it.
We have a first and a second.
Commissioner Esti.
Aye.
Commissioner Jensen.
Aye.
Commissioner Westman.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilk.
Aye.
And Chair Christensen.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. And moving on to item C. City property along Park Avenue. Tree removal permit for the removal of 22 trees between Park Avenue and the rail corridor. This project is in the coastal zone but does not require coastal development permit. Approved, recommended action is approve application based on the attached conditions and findings for approval. Staff presentation?
Thank you. So as mentioned, this is a very similar application, similar citing the other project for references on the, would be on the far right, just below that band you see here. This is for 22 trees within this corridor, the city's corridor, not the RTC corridor. It's, uh, starts right around the Monterey Avenue and Park Avenue intersection and goes to the Grove Lane seaward side over there. That's the area in question where all the major pruning and tree removal work is going to take place. It constitutes a corridor of densely packed strip of trees, as I mentioned, between that space and right up against the rail corridor, which also has a similar condition of densely packed trees on both sides of the rail. As I mentioned at the start of my first presentation. all trees are located as best the city can tell, and it was just surveyed on city land with the exception of, saw two trees, there's a number of trees that are proposed for pruning work, but as far as removal work, it looks like two trees, T7 and T15, are on both RTC and city property. It's just grown into both. Otherwise, all trees are located on city land. As noted in the report, the, this tree package recommends a number of removals for a wider variety of reasons. The trees suffer one or more conditions, including, as exemplified here, poor structural growth and attachment. In the case of this variety of acacia, the Bailey acacia, the arborists, at the very least in this area, noted that these trees should all be removed as identified or being generally an invasive species and one that has a predictably poor growth pattern here in having tight-knit, tight-knit growth that is prone to fall. And we're seeing some of that in this area already. There's also instances of severe decay or death among the trees listed, as well as a number of trees that pose some safety concerns to the public and to public and private property circulation. You can see here two pronounced examples of heavyweight leanover Park Avenue, and both could potentially have striking ramifications across Park Avenue and possibly some adjacent properties. Similarly, with the previous application, it's the stretch of the city land and right of way is quite densely populated with canopy coverage. And similar to the previous application, a lot of the specimens being proposed for removal are providing little, if any, contributing canopy. There are a couple of exceptions, but for the most part, they're undergrown, overcompeted trees that will, if anything, allow better growth among the trees to remain. Therefore, staff is actually not recommending any replacement requirements in this, in this zone. Public Works has indicated that they, they may be affecting some, some on new tree plantings in the area of native varieties, but that's, it may be more of a matter of deliver what we're, what's required and then see how much we can fill in. So with that, staff recommends approval as conditioned, proposed, and with the findings attached.
I've walked twice with the arborist on that same route, and we identified everything. They're there.
They're not the little metal tags. There's some other.
Little metal tags, but there's three different colored metal tags.
Well, there's, there's some with, if they have three digits, that's the RTC numbers. If they just go from like zero to 55, those are the city.
So I looked at number 15, 015, and it's shown here on the thing, 015 is a different tree. Anyway, doesn't matter. Point is, so you, you ring the, the trees in pink tape for the most part, right? So that's what I do. So I went back there and I looked for the, for that, and I said, okay, now I can at least see what they're going after. So I guess I'm just being a pill, so I'm sorry.
Some clogging may have fallen off.
Right, I saw there was a few dangling ones, but my concern was that when you, when you're like looking across from the jewel box and you're looking, looking at the village and you see Deepo Hill in the distance, and there's this background of eucalyptus trees and other trees that, and so my concern was, well, you're going to be removing a lot of that beautiful background, you know? So that's why, that was kind of my concern. Are they taking down all the big canopy trees? And what I convinced myself was that no, as is in the report. They're mostly taking down diseased trees, small trees, you know? So just the numbering thing just bothered the heck out of me because I couldn't figure it out.
Yeah, the, kind of the background to this was just going after overall public safety.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none. Moving on to public comment, anybody want to? Hearing none? We'll bring it back to deliberation.
We want to start at that end to start.
Keep looking this over.
All my questions I had were addressing the public.
Yeah, these trees on Park have been a nuisance in the 21 years I've lived on Escalona, and they keep falling over and wiping out PG&E lines, and they keep coming and replacing them. I would commend the arborist, actually, on this one and the prior work. They, it's very, very thorough, you know? It's an excellent job of categorizing these trees. I guess the only concern I have with the numbering is we're going to make sure when we're going to actually do the work that we're cutting down the right tree, but I assume you can figure that out.
I agree. I think it's nice to see this. I think my mic's working. I agree. I think it's nice to see the city taking on this project. I've always admired all the trees in Carmel. A lot of people talk about that. And they have all those magnificent trees by managing the trees that are on city property. And it's nice to see our city moving forward and doing this. I went out and I looked at every one of them, and I think that this is going to be a good project that's going to improve the area, not reduce the nice canopy that's there.
Thank you.
No further comment.
And I just have one last comment. I did have a couple of people contact me because they were concerned that these trees were part of the trees that were going to be taken out as part of the future rail trail that they're talking about putting in the area. And in going out and looking at them and verifying with staff, these trees are on the opposite side of the track where the RTC is proposing to put a rail track, and these trees really only impact safety along Park Avenue.
Any further deliberation? Do we have any decision?
I'll make a motion to approve this particular project.
Last second.
We have a roll call?
Commissioner Esti. Commissioner Jensen.
Aye.
Commissioner Westman.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilk.
Aye.
And Chair Christensen.
Aye.
Approved. All right, moving on to.
I did, and I made Nell's climb up and find them because there was poison oak called around the trees, and I didn't want to get poison oak.
Okay, moving on to the director's report. Do you have your director's report?
Is Katie? Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. So quick director's report for you today. Exciting news, 4401 Capitola Road broke ground. They had a groundbreaking event for the affordable housing with 36 units. So that's the, kind of the launch of our six-cycle housing with 36 new affordable housing units under construction as of today. Also, at the next planning commission meeting, you'll be reviewing 1098 38th Avenue, the affordable housing development there with 52 units. So your packets will be published on Friday, and so that is on track. So I really appreciate the special meeting tonight so that we didn't have to overlap these large items. And then also, continue to work with RRM and Veronica Taman Associates on the update. We've met with Merlon Geyer several times. I think we're at a place that we're hoping to publish within the next week. And then there's a seven-day public publishing period before we send it into the HCD. So waiting on one last round of edits from RRM and then hoping to publish. So that's exciting. We're getting closer, and I'll have another update for you at the April 4th meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Comment?
Oh, sure.
We're moving on to, so I had difficulty going through this package on my computer. It kept crashing. I finally found a way to get to it, but the concern is that when we have packages that have a lot of tiny writing and a lot of color photographs and whatnot, I would appreciate a hard copy. And I don't know to what extent we're going to get another huge 150-page packet like we had this time. If that's going to be the case next time, I would like to have a hard copy if it's going to be as difficult as it was this time.
Well, I think we can ask for a hard copy of anything that we want to have. You just need to ask the staff to give it to you, and they happily will provide it. Because I've done that several times, particularly on, you know, larger projects where you're looking at plans. Like I was thinking about the one that's going to happen up on 38th Avenue. You know, it might be, I mean, I'll probably be asking for real plans on that one rather than trying to do it all on the computer.
They used to give it to us automatically in those little bins. It was very nice. I guess that's.
Well, I think we're going to be environmentally sensitive about the amount of paper we use because we do print out lots of stuff.
You, just to add on, you are going to get printed plans for the portable housing project on 38th next week. And if you'd like, I can just deliver that with a full packet for you. If anyone wants to, wants the next packet to be fully printed and delivered. Everybody want that? I'll do.
I can do electronic as well.
Electronic, no. The set of plans, we'll have that printed.
It's the oldest members.
No, it's okay.
But we'll still have a set of plans.
Yeah, I'll just give you the plans, but I'll do two packets, and everybody gets plans.
Thank you. Okay. Any other, any other things? No? No, you're, you're good. All right, so I guess adjourns? And then to, thank you. Adjourn to the next very scheduled meeting of the planning commission on April 4th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. Thank you.